All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started, 'cause we can be down there in the night. Hopefully. So, first of all, we'll start out with the prayers given by Councilman Hardy, and then after that, Councilman Bell to give us our hope. Uh, fine, we'll go to that.
Our dear, kind heavenly Father, we approach the altar with prayer this evening. We're grateful for the opportunity we have of living in a free land to be able to exercise our right as citizens to voice our feelings and opinions and to work with our own government and our own cities to determine the things that we'd like to see happen in our towns. Father, we're ask thy Spirit to be here this night, that we may have it direct us to do what we do. Bless us, that we will have good discussions and that we will understand each other. We are grateful again for the opportunity we have of living in this free land. We ask these things only in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. The audience, please rise and repeat.
By the flag of the United States of America, I am to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first thing on the agenda is the consent agenda for the approval of the May seventeenth and the May thirty-first, special meeting and work session minutes. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve the consent agenda, that approve the following.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
A second, ma'am.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next thing is the staff reports. Oh, with the public forum. Sorry about that. Do we have anybody in the public that'd like to come up and address council? Seeing none? We'll go ahead and close the public forum. Now, we'll go into staff reports. Do we have any staff here?
Uh, Mayor and council, just a quick update. We did start taking high-line water on Monday into the PI system, so that has started. Obviously, the high-water runoff with the high temperatures is pretty much over, so we're gonna be monitoring that. It should be good for the year where we just started this late, but just kinda update that. The water tank is fixed, according to what I talked to Brad, so we'll have that in service too. So, we should be fine for water. And the new well at Memorial Park is almost completed, so that will now allow us to also use that in the culinary system and the PI, whichever one we're using that ditches, so we should be good for water as far as we can see, so we'll have any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Any other staff?
Mayor and council and public, just wanted to report a few things from the Recreation Office. This week, we had a few things start. We had the British Soccer Camp start. We had Jamie here from England, from Bristol, England, and he's teaching a group of kids soccer in the mornings at our Soccer Field. We also started our swim lessons this week, the first session of swim lessons. We have close to three hundred kids there for this first round, and we'll have four more of those sessions throughout the summer. And then on Tuesday, we started our tennis program, our summer tennis program, started Tuesday morning, and in the evening, we started our rookie baseball. That's our youngest program. That's a camp or a clinic format for pre-K or kindergarteners next year. So, we started that last night, went well also. So, those are the programs we do have. So, public, feel free to sign up for more swim lessons coming up this summer. As well, we are taking registrations for tackle football, and some of the coaches are going over plays and things where the kids are at. We're excited about that. Thank you.
And council, just a brief update. We met with Aqua Engineering today, got an update on our sewer upgrade, and they're still working with Davis County, they're putting that new technology in. We are looking at asking the state for an extension of time because of this new technology and, you know, Brad from Aqua feels like that might be something to say with Grant, because they're really looking at that new technology up in Davis County. So, that would be good, to possibly pull that out a few more years, but we are still moving forward with it, and he was pretty positive when he met with us today, so.
When you say a few more years, what do you mean?
Well, we're supposed to have the phosphorus limits by 2020, and I think they can, under the regulations, give you a five-year extension if needed, if it's warranted. So, he was gonna draft the letter, we can let you look at that before we send it and see if, because of that new technology that's being put in the Davis sewer system, if they would allow that, to make sure that it's gonna work the way they say it's going to work.
Five years, you may have a bunch more things you can add on to. Okay, any other staff?
Mayor and council, just a couple of things. I just reminded we're having a bike rodeo on the twenty-fourth, Saturday, the twenty-fourth, the Jaloon, June, Jaloon? Jaloon, it'll be the Jaloon, the twenty-fourth. It'll be out the parking lot out here from ten to twelve, so I encourage you to maybe spread the word, help us out a little bit. I don't know if any of you have seen Behind the Badge, last Friday night on Channel Four, we had Sergeant Sandoval was featured behind the badge, Channel Four News was a pretty good article on her, so we congratulate her on that. Police Department just finished up May. We had eleven-hundred-and-fifty-nine calls for service, one-hundred-and-thirty arrests, which resulted in two-hundred-and-thirty offenses, three-hundred-and-thirty-four citations, which resulted in four-hundred-and-thirty violations, four DUIs, four-hundred-and-forty traffic stops, and forty-five traffic accidents. Where have we been for the last month?
Thank you.
Mayor and council and public, I just have a couple of things tonight about the golf course. We had a busy week. We had Kiwanis Golf Tournament, which was fun. They raised a lot of money. On Friday, we had the Gladstand Am, sponsored by Rains. On Saturday, Monday, ladies team play. Today, we had Niggle School District Golf Tournament, and Friday, we have Valmont Galvanizing Company, so they're bringing one-hundred-and-twenty players. So, we're kind of in a swing of corporates and tournaments, and so it's been quite busy. One thing for the public is, we do have junior camps going on. This year, we did it a little different way. We've got, I think, six or seven different opportunities for kids, so Jake, our new assistant, is doing a really good job heading that up. Also, Couples League started last Thursday, so there's still time to get in Couples League, which is Thursday night, and men's and ladies associations in full swing, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Mike?
Yep, there's a couple of things. The Interfaith councils continue to meet, and they're preparing for their mayor's per breakfast during New Days. Chamber of Commerce has a new sign up on the north end of town, I don't know if you've noticed that. Glad to finally see some change on the sign from before, and have a new sign in Payson. They're gonna have a new networking convention on the thirteenth of June, and then on the fourteenth, it'll be the Movies in the Park here in Payson, The Secret Life of Pets, and then Shop Payson on the Sub-Cheeth of June, so they're gonna have a busy one. Tracy mentioned the golf course. It looked pretty good on Friday, it was very hot out there, and it's hotter now than it was then, but I commend them on the good job they're doing to take care of the golf course. And the parks, I thought were looking pretty good, too, and want to let the staff know about that. That's all, Mayor.
Okay.
I just, excuse me. I just wanna mention and give my thanks to Tracy and the group. I do the team play for all the courses in Utah County and Price and down south, and they all met Monday, and we golfed Gladstand, and I always hear nothing but praises for Gladstand. They can't get over how beautiful it is. There were several ladies that hadn't played the course since they made changes several years ago, and they just couldn't believe how beautiful it was. Also, the luncheon that was served up there, they did a fantastic job, and the ladies were all really pleased, so my praise go out to them. Also, I wanna see if any of the audience has had a chance to look at the Payson Chronicle today. Anybody yet? Mr. Judge Dogwest? Thank you. Do you know what I'm doing?
Yeah, Connie Erickson.
Right. There's an article in there that Connie Erickson wrote, and she talked about being a lifelong citizen here in Payson. She left for a while and was overseas, but when she came back, that's where she wanted to settle. And she told the story about how she could travel anywhere in Payson and see people that she knew, and they would all wave and have a smile on their face, and she said it kinda was different when she came back from Europe. But she's hoping that that wave will start again. I came in tonight and waved at Lynette, sitting there, and it's fun to do that, and I encourage all the citizens, try to be friendly to your neighbors, to people that you meet. It makes for a lovely place for us all to live, and I'll be waving. Okay, I'm done.
Okay, Grant?
Yeah, I just have a couple of things. One is, I need to leave at seven-thirty tonight, I have another appointment to go to. And then, we've made some progress on incentives for a hotel coming here. They're struggling to find lands still, but we've talked to the school district and to the county commissioners, and they all seem to be on board to help us get some incentives, so we'll continue working with that, so that's all I have.
Okay.
Have a couple things. They're in full swing, getting the cemetery ready down there in Kirby and giving that rosé pavement. I guess I have, and then the asphalt plants finally open out here, so they'll get on the potful packing. And then I have one more question. I coordinated with Dave and Tracy to borrow a piece of equipment from the golf course to spray weeds, I just wondered if anybody had any heartburn with me doing that, just be spraying the city right away, it's no private property, like weeds and fire irons? And then probably mostly in the older parts of town that don't have curb and gutter, and where the weeds come out next to the road. On the weekend, that's probably, the next couple of weekends, probably do it now. Just one thing, we had any heartburn with that?
Okay. I have nothing tonight, so we'll go ahead, and we'll go scout attendance certificates, and I'll turn that over to Linda.
Okay. Looks like we have one scout here tonight, and his name is Keller Stinson. Keller, would you like to come on up? Do you want to? I'll give you this certificate. Thank you for coming. There's one thing, I want you to stand up here and face the audience. There's one thing that we've been having all the scouts do, and that is, we want you to tell us what you love about scouting. All right, okay, have at it. Do you want the mic?
Sure.
Okay. There's a leader. Okay, hold it. All right.
So, what I like best about our scouting program is, even though we only have three deacons in our ward, nobody ever feels left out, because we're all like together. Unfortunately, they couldn't make it tonight, but we were able to kind of, we just have a fun time all together. We just, we just love each other, and we have a great time doing whatever in our other community service project, or even just tonight, going to a community council meeting.
That's great. Thank you. Appreciate, and now I want you to come and shake hands with everybody.
Okay, next, we have the Chamber of Business of the Month. Turn that over to the chamber.
Thank you. I just wanted to, before we give the award, update on a couple of things Mike had mentioned, also that we have a new billboard there at the north end of town. We also wanted to be sure and invite everyone personally and everyone here. Saturday is Free Fishing Day, so you don't have to have a license, and the Chamber's having a fun event at the Pole Canyon Resort there in Santaquin, and so from ten to twelve, you can come. We're gonna have hot dogs and treats at lunch, and I'm told the Santaquin City Council, they think they're pretty good fishermen, so I'm really hoping Payson's gonna step up and show 'em up. So, we'd love to have you there. Also, just a quick correction, the Movies in the Park is on the sixteenth, it's on Friday night, and it is here at Petition, and it's The Secret Life of Pets, and our shop local, as Mike mentioned, is the seventeenth, and it's gonna be at Payson Market, and they have a really, really fun event planned, so it's a great opportunity to see all the different businesses that are here in our community and in Santaquin, that really between the two communities, pretty much everything we need, we have right here. And one of the reasons we have pretty much everything we need is because of our Business of the Month, so I'll let you know about them. It's really kind of fun. As I was getting ready to go, there was a commercial came on that was all about our Business of the Month, and they're the folks with the helpful, the place with the helpful hardware folks, you know? And of course, Ace Hardware, there's a lot of companies that have a slogan, then there's companies who have a philosophy, and I think our Ace Hardware is one of those companies that their helpful hardware folks is more than just a slogan, it's really a philosophy. And they are so helpful about everything when anyone in the community has a need. They're helpful with the Chamber, they're helpful with our schools, and so we wanna honor Ace Hardware as our Business of the Month. I know Jared couldn't be here, and he was gonna have someone, oh, good, good. And indeed, I knew that you have to speak and talk, right?
She can do that.
Thank you so much.
So, on behalf of Payson Ace Hardware, I want to say thank you for this award. The success of Payson Ace Hardware is the result of years of hard work and dedication and the support of Payson City and the surrounding cities. Thank you for all your continued support.
Great, thank you. You can come right up here, and all our city council are right behind us, and make a picture with you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Okay, next on the agenda, and we'll turn it over to Ray Gerber. Is he here? Mayor comes out, see him here. Okay, so do we have a motion to amend the agenda? We'll make that motion. We have a motion to amend the agenda?
All second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll go from there. We'll go to turn the time over to the judge for the swearing-in of a couple new officers, and we'll go from there.
Thank you. This is Officer Knighton, I don't see.
Officer Moford got hung up at EVO, emergency vehicle operations, and he doesn't get out of there until ten o'clock tonight, so we're just gonna swear, and Officer Knighton.
I thought he was gonna have bronty hair or something.
He's our department photographer, he's.
I thought he had bronty all over his head there.
We'll go ahead from here, judge, go ahead.
Officer Knighton, I have a hearing here. I'll give you a raise right hand, and repeat after me. I, Alex S. Knighton.
I, Alex S. Knighton.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend?
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America?
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, now we know how all you officers are, did you wanna make a speech?
Oh, yeah.
That's the, that's the main deal there, isn't it?
Yeah, you can, I mean, as a scout, you're a person who's. You pass up by a scout. One thing I do wanna mention, Payson has been a dream goal of mine, but being here in this council and seeing the citizens and council members has really invigorated the idea that this is an amazing community, and it's one that I'm very proud to be a part of. Ideally, here shortly, we'll be moving closer, and I can be more invested towards the community, but I'm very excited to not only serve, but to really help out and be a friend to each and every single one of you, so thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you.
I can remember Officer Chico Police telling Dewayne that the officers, and I do, and then it's a lot of crap.
All right. We, did he come in yet?
He did not come in, I just called him, and he had a little bit of mix-up, so I said he could come on the twenty-first, next Friday.
Okay, so we wanna go back and make the motion. I'll make the motions table, the presentation of the carry of the phone. Okay, we have a motion, motion to table, do we have a second?
All second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, we'll table that. Next thing, do we have a motion to go into public hearing? Some moved. Motion, do we have a second?
All second.
We got a motion and a second, boy, that was a tough one. All right, this is a public hearing on the zone change from the A5 annexation holding zone.
I need a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. A little favor. Okay, motion carries, and you oppose. Okay, we are in a public hearing for the zone change from the A5 annexation holding zone to the RMF-10 multifamily residential and preliminary plan for the Spring Creek Town Homes proposed on the southwest corner to the intersection of 1130 South and 1700 West and the South Meadows Plan. Turn it over to Trace.
Uh, Mayor and council, just give it a second to get the projector warmed up, but it's coming on. So, this is the Spring Creek Town Home Project, which some of you that have been the planning commission have probably been familiar with, so as this warms up, try to get it so where you can see it, but the project site is right in that area where the red is, which will get a little brighter, so the existing condominium project's right there, and then, of course, Walmart's across the interstate, so. So, just a quick update, the, it was obviously in the A5 H holding zone, it has to be rezoned to the RMF-10 multifamily residential zone. It's consistent with what is in the South Meadows Plan, so it's, that's what, you know, the zoning is right there, so that's consistent, and then, obviously, it takes legislative action by you and the council to be able to approve the zone change. And then, there's just a subdivision is, like I said, in the RMF zone, and there's requests by the applicant for modifications and waivers, and then that would be a development agreement, too, that'll come with it. So, like I said, the RMF zone, it basically spells out ten units per acre, what is the maximum units allowed in that zone, and it requires an open space of at least thirty per, you know, percent. Off-street parking has to be addressed, just like any other, and then, building design or, you know, issue, you have to meet, and then the project amenities are required in that zone. So, this is, you're not gonna read all this, but this is just kind of a layout of the site, so you've got, you've got 1130 West and 1130 South, and then the interior roads that the utilities are now building. So, just like, again, this is the ten units breaker, so there's, with the site size, it would allow up to fifty-three units in there, and there's, right now, it's designed to have eight buildings. Most of them are two-story, but there are some single-story units in there in the design, and then, like I said, the materials and that must be consistent with that zone for the look. So, here's just some pictures that Evan Nixon has provided that kind of shows some of the products that it could look like. So, the project layout design, just one of the things that, it's been asked for is a private street that was twenty-four feet wide, which our, yeah, our standard is a forty-feet-wide asphalt, fifty-six-foot rideaway, so the roads would all be, and the utilities would all be privately owned and maintained in there because they're private roads, so that's something that the city council has to approve because it's not our standard. So, on the off-street parking, going to that, it's a, like I said, if they have a two-car garage, forty-two of the units do, and then eleven of them have a single-car proposal, which means that, 'cause you just have to have two off-street parking spaces per unit, so. There is some visitor parking that's shown, like right in here in a couple areas, just so with visitors, 'cause obviously with the twenty-four-foot road, you would never have room to park in front of somebody's house. He has requested to obviously waive the RV, the on-site RV parking and that, and we'll get into that in just a minute. So, here's just, I'm not gonna go into this, but just here's kind of an example that was provided, just kind of what some of the landscaping would be, so that's not, I mean, some of it would be grass, obviously, but, and then just some of the amenities that would be in there, there's a clubhouse, splash pad, sports court, and, you know, picnic area and stuff, so that's just kind of some of the amenities that were proposed, and then there's just some pictures of what it could look like. So, on the fencing, our, the ordinance currently requires masonry fencing, and he's proposing a Simtech product, which I don't have a problem with, I mean, it's similar in look and feel, so I don't see an issue there, and then the six-foot vinyl fence that it talks about on the bottom is that, you know, the delineate's kind of behind the common and the limited common area right behind the unit, so that you have kind of that little private area behind the unit, just for, you know, storage and stuff for your kids or whatever, I mean, it's not a very big area. So, the compliance with our city regulations, it talks about that you have to satisfy the regulations of our code, obviously, like any project, which require, you know, engineering, planning, and layout of utilities and all that. And then there'll be CCNRs and an HOA that'll have to be in there because of the nature of the project and having all the private roads, and that'll have to have, you know, an HOA to help manage their fees and everything, so that when the time comes, they have an issue, and they have plenty of, they have money in there to fix that, and of course, the CCNRs are covered because it's all common area, and so you have to have a way to maintain that and have everything done there, so. So, here's a list of the modifications and waivers that have been asked for for this project. So, he would like to reduce. So, he would like to reduce the review fees for development services, is one of the requests. Obviously, the private street, there's, there would only be sidewalk on one side of the road, in, interior to the development, the outside, public roads would have sidewalk. Like I said, the utilities would be privately owned and maintained. Now, he's asking to waive the requirement to have onsite RV parking and storage. The sewer line in 1130 South, we agreed because the master plan for that South Meadows area shows that it would go west, right there, so the, we don't really need it in this location, so staff's definitely fine with that because nobody else would tie into it until you go further west. And then, just the fencing requirements, he's asking to waive the fence on the west side until phase two, and then, not even putting the fence on the south side, but we'll get into that in just a second with the planning commission recommendation, which is on this slide. So, the planning commission had a public hearing on March 8th, which they first had, and they remanded that back to staff due to, you know, some questions on storm rain and addressing the fencing and some other issues. So, when it went back to planning commission on the 10th of May, the planning commission recommended to widen 1740 West, which is the road that runs north and south through the development, to be about as close to 30 feet wide as we can, instead of the 24. The other two that ran east and west, they were okay leaving, recommending leaving those at 24. Like, they were okay with the sidewalk on the one side of the street through the development. They actually would recommend providing RV parking and storage on the site, or, you know, some of that, which may mean losing a few units to be able to accommodate that. And then, they actually, they were kinda, they wanted more information on the Simtech fence rather than, and stick with the masonry, but, like I said, I, as a staff, we don't really have an issue with that, and then, they wanted the fencing on the west side to go in with phase one and not be postponed, and then, they requested that during, with phase three, the fence on the south would go in, which is that Simtech fence. And then, they did want the fencing required between the common, the limited common and the common area, which should probably be just a white vinyl, you know, right behind the units. And then, you know, they were okay waiving the sewer line in 1130 South also. So, the council, obviously, has two things it's looking at, is one is the zone change, the zone change to approve that, which would be, you know, to take it out of the A5H zone into the RMF zone, and then, in the subdivision, you have the preliminary plan, so you could either approve that with the conditions, which could be, obviously, all the ones that the planning commission recommended, plus the, you know, the fees or whatever you guys wanna do there, you can remand it back to staff in, you know, saying that all these conditions have to be met, and then, bring it back to you, which, you know, require coming back at another meeting, or obviously, you can deny it if you don't agree with it or whatever, because it's not consistent with all of our ordinances on that, but, so those are kind of your options. That's the quick and dirty version of the presentation, so, if you wanna go into the public hearing?
Go ahead. This is a public hearing, and first of all, Mr. Wicks, do you, you wanna say anything?
Sure.
Please come up to the mic, state your name, say something, and then, we'll turn it over to the public.
I'm Evan Nixon. Um, so, I just wanted to reiterate that the 24 feet is, is fairly standard in both developments in Payson City as well as the entire valley, this type of development. Actually, widening the work road, I think, would be detrimental, the idea is to try and keep cars from parking on the street, and by widening, it would actually encourage it. Most of the places that have, have wider, well, actually, there's quite a few places that don't have 24-foot light streets and don't restrict parking, here, they would, it would be restricted. So, the 24 feet is, is more than adequate to provide safety and emergency access. Part recreational vehicle parking, actually, all the, all the units have a garage, so there is room for, for parking RVs in their own garage, there is room for large RVs, those would have to be stored off-site, and there is a private storage facility available within five minutes of the property. So, I think that it's recreational vehicles, storage is at, but, just, on, on the fencing, would like to use Simtech, it seems, actually, my neighbor put it up several years ago, and we share a fence, it seems to be a, a good product, it's good, or, masonry fence, and it has some advantages, so, with just more consistent quality in that, that you get. As far as on the, on this, I mean, I, the reason that I was proposing that, to put the fencing on the west side in with phase two, for the first phase would be building number one and two, which are waiting, and then, building three and four would be in phase two, and that's when I would propose, which are border on the west boundary, and that's why I proposed to build the fence in the second phase. Fence along the south boundary, property to the south is, is part of the same, is, one of the South Meadows, plan is, is the same zone, so, for a significant distance. The closest resident is approximately 600 feet away, and if it is developed, it's likely to be the same develop, type of development or density, and the whole purpose of putting that fence is to separate these types. And, and actually, it's a personal preference, I, I'd rather look at horses than fence and pasture, and so that's why I'd like an open, an open fence if possible on the south side. One thing that wasn't, and actually, it didn't, wasn't talked about in the planning commission, and it was in some notes that I gave in the staff, just wanted clarification. Can I get a slide? How, like, what, uh, the elevations? So, so the, the units, so just wanted to show the elevations in the aisle. Well, there is, you can show it from the beginning. Yes. So, the ordinance requires that 25% of the front elevation, which is what you'd be looking at, needs to be masonry. And, and I guess the question I have is, was the intent for that to be square footage-wise or kind of a vertical, that you had to have a minimum height of masonry? Because given where we are here, with the garage door actually being a major portion of it, in some of the cases, it would actually require a 25% area-wise, is you'd have to provide some kind of masonry above that first roof line of the second story. Obviously, the plan is to have at least, you know, 50% of the first level, which would be 25% of the overall height, and in many cases, more than that. So, I just, just like that clarification that 25% vertically would work, would be important. Sorry?
Is stratus right there?
Yep.
What is the clarification on that?
Well, just, you know, the fence heights, just, it, you know, it'd just be the six-foot fence, I mean, or eight would be the highest we allow.
The question is...
On the, on the 25% vertical on the... Oh, you mean on the, on the unit, it's...
Yeah.
Um, I don't know for sure, we'd have to look it up, but I know it's, it's, there's a height issue, but if it's two-story with the roof, I don't, I don't think...
Well, I mean, it looks fine to me if you just went to that first roof line.
Yeah, I don't, I'd have to double-check on that, because that's not something I usually look at, but I don't see an issue with this.
But one thing that won't...
Because I know we allow a two-story building, and there is a heights requirement, but I don't know, I can't remember what exactly that is.
One thing is, that won't affect anything we're doing tonight, because we aren't talking about the buildings, that'll come later, so that'll happen with staff or...
Well, and the reason I'm asking for this, I, you know, I find, I want me to have final architectural plans, and I guess I'd like to have as much decided right then as...
Let me take exception to this, because if you heard what he said, this is the first time he's addressed it, and so, planning commission didn't have an opportunity, neither has staff had the opportunity to address it, and, and I would ask you to take that into consideration as you make your decision on how you handle that, in fairness to staff and, and the process that it's gone through up to this point, and to spring that, seem a bit inappropriate.
Actually, actually, it was presented to staff in notes that I gave them, it just, it, and I asked for it, we discussed it, planning commission, and it didn't have. So, but it was, but there is, that, that request was made as part of staff communication that I've had. So, it's the first time I've had some... And, I guess, I don't need a decision, but I'd like to know if there's some indication of that, whether there's a problem with it. Sounds, I guess I'm hearing enough. I don't know, is there any questions that the council has for me, that I, any clarification that I...
Go ahead, Mr. Ellis. What, as far as RV stories, what did you have, what, what would the requirement be, what was planning commission recommending?
They didn't give a specific thing, and our ordinance isn't super, you know, specific on how many, like, RV parking spaces are required per unit, but, just kinda talking with Jill, we kinda looked at it, and, you know, we, I don't know, I mean, somewhere, we need to probably update our ordinance to get more specific, but I would think somewhere between 10 to 16 with 53 units would be probably a pretty good number, because that, you know, that's still, isn't like one per unit or even one per two, so, you know, you're still getting, you're not requiring a ton of them, but it would still give you some room there, so... But that would be something, we would have to actually update our ordinance on and get more specific on exactly how many per unit would be required. Off-street parking is one extra unit per every four, at which, in this case, would, and this, it would require 14 extra spaces, and I'm providing 19.
So, in your CCNRs and HOA agreement, are you gonna have it there? Is no, if you don't have RV store, place for RVs, are you gonna have it so they cannot park any RVs in driveways and on the street?
The intent would be that they wouldn't be able to park it, they can park it in their driveway for a limited time, for like 48 hours, and so that they, for unloading and loading, but, yeah, that would be the intent, is that there would be no long-term parking of, of RVs outside of their garages. So, they, they do have, like I said, they do have individual space, every unit has a garage, so there is opportunity to, to park inside.
Why didn't we, why didn't we go curb gutter, or sidewalks on both sides of the street?
Uh, just...
That's more my issue, I think, is safety with, because this can have a lot of kids in it, I can see.
Yeah, and so, the, you would, there's, there is sidewalk on at least one side of the street, and it was just to, to help minimize the, the amount of impervious area in the project, and, and they are, there were streets so that, and short streets, so that traffic is not an issue, so it is, they would, they have to cross the street someplace, and they would have to cross it, you know, one time, and, and they would be, have access to the sidewalk. And that's pretty, and there's, actually, there's more sidewalk in this design than most facilities of this type have. There's a lot of places that don't provide any sidewalk in, in the high-density development.
I know that that's one of the big, big issues that we've had, brought up a lot, is sidewalks, because, especially when you only have it on one side, most of the time, they don't wanna walk on a sidewalk, they just assume walk down the road.
I mean, there's room to put sidewalk in, you just take it out of the driveway, and looking at other units, and the driveways I proposed are significantly longer than, than, than most units, they're, they're 21 feet long, and the intent of that was so that even your largest pickup truck can fit on it without overhanging. In a lot, in a lot of places, they'll put in a 16-foot driveway, and then, they'll park a truck on it, and it's hanging out with the sidewalk, so the sidewalk becomes unusable anyway. So, that was, that was the intent, was to try to minimize that situation.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, has anybody, would they like to stand up, and please come to microphone, state your name?
Kristi Bat, to the planning and zoning meeting for this development, he has made some improvements asked, because he wanted to originally block off 1130 South and make that his entrance for development, and not, the planning and zoning and himself did not understand that that is a dead-end road and the only access to all those homes, and so, I wondered if he had made other decision on how, what he's gonna use for his access in construction. Also, just because I've had a son live in a development like this, the garages aren't tall enough to back any recreational vehicle except a jet ski in, and so, if he's thinking that they can park it in their driveway, well, that will take up the whole driveway. Other question, no fence to the south, and he'd rather look at horses, lots of children in this area, and I hate for my neighbor to get lawsuits because a horse kicked their child or reached over the fence and bit one. Horses are that way, they do that, and I think it's a big mistake not to require fence on that side for safety for the people living there, and also for protection for people who've lived there all their lives and have livestock there. Another question I have, if he would be willing, if you look at that plan, and on the west side, there's the dead-end road, but to the west, behind Simonson's, that is landlocked. I own the property on the other side, it is all landlocked, would he consider putting dead-end road to the edge of his property so that that property, our property can be developed? The other thing is, I was wondering from the city, and I need to go to the other planning, what future roads do they have planned? We've been waiting and waiting for sewer to finally come down our way, but we were told that there would have, for this development to go in, we talked to a gentleman at the sewer, and they, place, and they said a lift station has to be installed there. Is that true for this development, are they gonna need a lift station, and if so, is Payson City funding that? Or are they gonna bring sewer on down to our road, down our roads? Are they just gonna let this development go in and take care of them and not the rest of us? What plans does Payson City have for future that? Then, the other question was sidewalks. If I have a unit, or if I have a child in a unit on the very west, is that child going to be able to access the bus, a bus stop from, on, walk on sidewalks to get to the bus stop? I'm not seeing. Originally, the plan only had five parking places for visitors, and so, 53 units, and you have five people come to visit, that's not going to, to work. They're going to have to be able to park in the person's driveway that they're visiting, and so, that's kind of, even 19 is very limited if you're having a get-together in the clubhouse. You know, I'm, we were all hoping that it would be a single-family dwelling development that would more fit the lifestyle that's out there and those of us that own acreage. My other question to you guys, even though you're not planning and zoning, the rumor is that Payson City has approved storage units across the street to the east between the freeway and this development, and we would like, as landowners, like to know if that's true.
Where's that at?
To the east, between, just south of the Ridgestone condos, between the freeway and this development.
It's not industrial there, there's nothing.
There's, that was not approved, that's rumor, okay. Because that would eliminate his... Cause that would eliminate his storage unit problem, but there's no room in this development. We all love our RVs, 90% of people own one. And so it's not conducive to our lifestyle here. Yeah, Simonsons worried about, one of their biggest worries was about where the water, the flow off because of all the cement. And the blacktop would flow into their yard and in their property and flood them out. And that's not been addressed. And the sad thing about these two storage units, their house would look out at the back of them. And, you know, they're considering selling because if this goes in, they will sell. And so it's, it's driving people who's lived here all our lives out. So just wanted you to consider that.
Okay. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Gary DeGraff, and I live down the street from where this is going to be. We would prefer that it be three, uh, third acre lots, homes on third acre lots. You already know that, you, and we've told you that in the past. I thought that the density home, homes are going to be on the north of it. So you got condos on one corner, you got this on this corner. How many more of these are going to go in?
That's a good question. It all depends on who puts it in and what they're zoned and everything else, yeah.
Is there anywhere else in Pace that needs density homes? Rather than put them all out on the way.
There's some going down by Bull Mountain, 168 of them.
Is, the intent originally was third acre lots there from there on, I believe. What I saw originally when the, the development started. And the high density is going to be directly west of the condos and north, right along. Was that the original? Does anybody know that?
Not sure.
Don't know.
Dave, is, is he referring to the trans-oriented development, things that we used to have out there as far as density is concerned? I can't remember, I don't think we had density that close, that going anywhere but north.
Right, that's, that was the original design, I know that. But anyway, it seems, I'm just sitting here listening to what's being said. If this is going to go in, it seems that, and I don't know this young man here, but it seems that he's trying to make it cheap as he can. If you're going to put it in, I'd like to see something nice. If you, if you're supposed to have it so far up, then you ought to have it so far up. Where's the, where's the parks going to be? Is there room to put that many homes in? Is there room to left for the parks?
I think by ordinance is they have to have so much.
I understand that.
Yeah.
There is an ordinance that says that, will there be that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyway, it just seems like everything's pushed towards cheap. Make as much as you can. And I think you ought to, if you're going to do it, I think you ought to make it nice. Or put it back to the third acre lot.
All right.
I just got one thing on the South Meadows master plan. That's where this comes from and there's about 30 acres in there that's for 10 acre, or 10 units per acre. Then it goes up, going north of 1130, it goes up to 15 units per acre. So that was all in the South Meadows master plan.
Hello, I'm Ellen DeGraff, and I don't know enough about the master plan to really speak intelligently about it, but I do live there. And so, you know, as, we know that, we know that building out there is going to occur. We know it is. But I think we can be smart about the way we do it, the things we bring to our community. We can, we can say, okay, we have the condos there, we've watched and heard. So if it's true or not true, maybe the officer here can answer how many calls he gets to the condo area. When you put a lot of people together, you increase your crime, increase your accidents. I, I should have written my speech out or something, I didn't. So that's a worry to me. You know, I drive around different communities in our area, like I drove over to Salem, I'm like, wait, they're putting in these beautiful houses. And we're going to put in townhouses? I was going to call them condos or townhouses or, and my sister lives in one of these townhouses up in Salt Lake. And we've gone there as a family, and we're not a very big family, to have like a dinner. And it's so hard to find a place to park. And she can't have, you can't park here and you can't, so where do you go? So that's, the parking is a huge issue. And, and, you know, I don't know enough about anything else other than I know that when we've gone for family parties, it's really difficult. And so then we choose to go to other people's homes. And that's kind of sad for the people that live there. Kristi already mentioned about little fat, vets on the south and that worries me too. You know, kids climb, kids go, kids play, and we want them to play. All the play places are kind of going away. So where are they going to go play and be safe? And not have to stay in their homes and do video games? And my question, I know this was addressed last week, last time I wasn't here, but are we still planning basements?
Yes.
That's a huge worry to me because I live upon the hill in that area. And just because of flow of water, we've been flooded on team times. So I, I don't know, I could go talk to him and say, it's going to flood here, but I, you know, probably wouldn't, but there you go. So I don't know if you can change the way the water flows in, in the design and the, anyway. And yeah, I'm worried about the sidewalks and all of those things that have been addressed as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anybody else?
Mayor, Council, Red Hump. I'm glad to see the development taking place. I know that property's been, they've wanted to help on that for a long time, so I'm glad to see that moving forward. I definitely want to see the development, the, the city does need it. But I've come to a lot of these meetings and it seems like every time something like this comes up, the developers are wanting a little more. They're wanting us to lower our standards a little more. It just seems like they're trying to squeeze in, add as much as they can and squeeze out that other stuff. You know, the sidewalks, space, uh, let's not do the fans, save a little more money so we can make a little more money. I do want the development, I, like I've always said, we need to have smart growth. I don't want to, you know, make, make a deal breaker or anything, but we do have some standards that I think we need to maintain. We can't keep lowering the bar, lowering the bar, and we're just going to, you know, end up with development that's really not smart development. But I am for the development, don't give your home, thanks.
Hi, I've mentioned before, I am Keller Stinson. I used to live in some condos and I was quite clear on the land for like the kid play place in this. Is there just one large central area or do we have other multiple areas for the kids to play? Because I know that over in our townhouses, we had other multiple areas for land for the kids to go in the backyard or be with each other. But if there's just one central area, then all the kids are kind of crammed together. And I can see some kind of issues with that because different age groups, you, you never know what's going to happen if there's not some, a little bit of separation between a couple of different areas. Just a little bit of experience, thank you.
Thank you.
Good point. I forgot one thing, and it was the water table. I lived there 16 years with a split entry home. We had to put a sump pump in and it ran spring for three or four months. He did his perk test in the very driest time that we've ever had for years. And if you were to go down there early this spring, the fill to the west of Simonson's was completely flooded. Those ditches and all those irrigation things that used to drain that area have not been maintained for years and years. And so the water backs up and the water table comes up. And he will have lawsuits because those basements, I guarantee, will flood. There's, across the street, there's a root cellar that flooded this year and it's not even eight feet deep. So he, he will, if he's putting basements in, he's mistaken.
Anybody else? Anything else? Oh, we got one more. Haven't used the timer yet, do I need to in now?
Teresa Hyatt, and I've been on the planning with this. I'm wondering if we have looked, like Mrs. Beck said, she's landlocked. Have we looked at other things around there and how they're going to develop there? I mean, I, I totally agree we need to do stuff like this, but we need to have a better plan, I think, for everything else out there. And I've said this, West Mountain people were kind of made promises when they annexed into the city, that they would have those bigger, nicer homes. I mean, I wasn't, I wasn't here when they did it, but I think we need to start thinking about the West Mountain people because they do own the property. And we need to be able to talk to them, there's not a lot of them, but they need to have a say of what's going on. Or you're going to become landlocked and they're not going to sell, they're not going to do anything because this is what worries me is they're seeing stuff like this and they were made other promises. It's a good development, I just, I kind of think it needs to be smaller also because it is so close to the condos. I think we're getting too many, what, beginner homes and not enough bigger homes where people move in that, that have expendable income.
When you say smaller, do you mean less units?
Less units.
In, in the same acreage or just less units and less acreage?
Less, less units in the same acreage. But I'm, I'm still, like when she came up with the, you know, the road, if he can have that road. But I understand, you know, we said it's okay that he has the private, that it's private roads, which has been a discussion because how does Pace and City go in and take care of private roads? Or, you know, like they were talking about the, getting the garbage cans and stuff like that. So they would have to actually be taken out on the road. You know, just, just stuff like that. But I'm still, I'm still thinking we need to start listening to the people that live out there and not just make a decision. I mean, we need development, but we also need development that people are going to be happy to live with. And we need to plant it better. She's landlocked there. If there was a road that went back there, she would no longer be landlocked. And that would open up a whole bunch of areas out there. And then I have another thing. So with the, the RV parking, I kind of thought we could decide against it. And that he was supposed to go talk to the different RV places and set that up so that they could take their RVs and stuff there if they needed to. Because we, we could see there was no place to, to park RVs. That was my understanding at the meeting. Maybe I misunderstood, but it was, it was discussed quite thoroughly, I thought. I think that's it.
All right. Anybody else? See, we have a motion to close public hearing. So moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
We are now out of public hearing. Do we have any discussion from the council?
Sure.
Devin, what, in your, where would you propose that you would, when it snows here, when it snows and, it's not if, it's when it does? Where would you put the snow?
It's actually shown on the site, there's a crosshatched area. Most of it would be.
Down there at the very bottom?
Well, there's, there's four different places.
Two there, one there, and then one there.
Any discussion here? Any other discussion?
I have a few questions. Travis, on the Syntec fence, how durable is that?
I mean, it hasn't been around for a long time, but it's, it's, it's made of a pretty good material. I don't, I don't see it, it, it's a lot more durable than vinyl or than that, so.
They've got a third year warranty that they put up.
I think for good funds and everything.
I looked at it, it looks good, it looks okay. Next thing is, um, the amenities. If you're phasing this, when are you planning on putting amenities in?
As a part of phase two.
Phase two, so is the city going to require some kind of bonding to make sure that happens if we do the phase one first and, and wait for some amenities?
Um, we can only make a bond for the public utilities and infrastructure. It'd have to be something in the development agreement is where we would have to put that.
One thing for the people that live out in that area, you might want to get with the, the city. Because we do have a master plan with a lot, there was a lot of public forum and that people were invited to. I think the council passed it four or five years ago. And so the people were invited to come talk about that, but some of this area is 10 units per acre. And so you, if you, if you want to address that, that'd be a place to address it. Come back to the city and talk to them about these areas and what you think might work and what might be best. Because that's the way it is, uh, been passed right now for the, for the, for the long-term plan for this area, so.
Okay. Mike?
I don't have it for the comments.
Any other discussion?
I'm concerned about the sidewalks. I wish there were sidewalks on both sides. Simply because I'm afraid of things that might happen if kids are walking that close to the driveways. And people pulling out and not seeing them. I know that they can cross the road, but that's a danger also. And I don't know exactly how far the bus stop, I might have missed seeing that. How far through that they have to walk to catch the bus. But that frightens me.
Well, they, they would have to cross the street sometimes.
Right, right.
So it's just where they cross it. So they're, they're within a, a street crossing, a sidewalk, in any place.
But they have to cross the street to get to the sidewalk.
Yes. Well, and, and they're going to have to cross the street sometime no matter what, to, to get to.
Right.
For most of the units to get to the amenities and that, so just where do they cross it?
Okay. All right.
Mayor, I might have a comment after all. I, I also have to agree with Lynn, I have some concerns about the road width, I have concerns about the sidewalks, I have concerns about the parking.
I have a question. Travis? So you went to a 30-foot road with sidewalks on both sides, is that something that would work?
Um, most likely, he would probably have to lose.
Please strike.
I think either he'd have to really shorten the driveways or probably lose these four units on the side and then see how that, the amenity area would come together. Just be, otherwise, I mean, you're going to shut that sidewalk right next to the building there and then, you know, you'd lose some of this driveway.
I wonder if planning and zoning come up elsewhere.
They didn't say anything about the sidewalk, really. They, they didn't have an issue with the sidewalk on just one side, they just wanted a wider road on this, this road right here.
To 30 feet.
Which road again?
The north-south one right.
right up against the units on the east side, so it would widen to the, to the, to the east.
It seems to me that the kids could just walk anywhere then. There's no restrictions, there's nothing.
This is...
That just sounds crazy to me.
The public hearing is closed, so we gotta keep that...
Is he public?
Anybody? Well, he was asked directly by the council, that's why. Any other discussion? Motion.
What?
Buck sidewalk.
Linda? Mike?
I'm concerned about the sidewalk.
You know, we've had a couple places in the city where we've had sidewalks only on one side of the street and we've heard nothing but horror stories about that and about the safety of children.
Well, even in the senior development, we had that. That's the last one, I think we got hit up on it.
Yeah, so I, I am very concerned about that. I'm, in the parking issues, I, I know, I've been in those ish places that are like this and there is no parking.
Yeah.
As much as we want to save there's parking, I'm not sure there is.
Well, when it comes to the usable parking.
I live on it.
We'll go for a motion here if you're ready.
Oh, can I just say one thing? I live on the street where there's no sidewalks on the other side and it has been hazardous for children coming and going to Parkview School. It's been, it's been awful. Plus, you talk about a twenty-four foot wide road, how wide is my road? What would you guess?
Yeah, you're probably twenty feet.
Yeah.
The paved part of it.
The paved part's maybe twenty feet. Um, you need wider road, I think, so.
Before you make a motion, I, I agree with planning zoning on the, on the fencing. The fencing needs to be done on all places and it can be done as the phases go, but I think we've, we gotta have fencing.
So here's my recommendation for, I'm going to go with the planning commission recommendations with thirty-foot wide road, but I'm adding sidewalk to both sides of the road. Instead of just the single. Uh, and I'm going to go with their RV parking that recommends at least ten spaces. Uh, I'm going to go with install the fence for the complete project and being we're going with the Simtech, that's not costing you so much in masonry, the Simtech's a lot cheaper than masonry. And, uh, you know, and every other recommendation that they have, but I'm going to say the fence needs to be done all at once.
Okay. So we have...
And what, any other staff conditions that would, I, I might have missed?
Did I miss any, Travis?
This, the fees, we would like those.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not in favor of waiting for...
The staff report dated today's date has Jill's staff recommendations in it, so if you want to reference that, that would be the document that...
Okay, well, but, and I'm fine with that, but I want, I want sidewalk on both sides of the road.
Oh, no, you, you, in addition to everything you've set up to this point, that would be the document you've referenced to capture her, uh, being staff, her staff recommendations there.
Okay, is it clear to everybody what the motion was? All right, is there, has been, a motion has been made, do we have a section? So moved. We have a motion and a second. Are there any other discussions on this?
So Scott, just to clarify, that's a motion to approve this, the development?
Yeah, we're moving, we're going from the A5 to the...
Okay.
...A10 zone and then approving the project with these planning commission, Jill recommendations, but with in addition to the sidewalk on both sides of the road.
Okay. So we got a motion, second?
I have one comment, just for discussion on the RV parking. I'm still struggling with RV parking in areas like this, does that make it more, you just have more clutter and instead of having off-site, making sure it's off-site, than having spaces and gives you more parking. Part of the reason, I'm still just struggling with that, so I just want some commentary.
But it's, it's fault.
It is fault.
Right, and I, I, I can see that, but is, would it be better in a place like this to have it so it's not even there? So it's, then park someplace else, that's...
If you're going to allow them to park them in the driveways on a twenty-four foot road, you can't even back it in your driveway.
Right, it won't work in the driveways, understand that.
And, and, and that's, that's something you can understand that our city ordinances won't allow them to park them in that complex and having them hanging out over sidewalks and things like that.
Well, they come private, so we can't even join there anyways.
Well, and, and Jill addressed that at the planning commission's meeting for back in, in March. And one of the things that, and she articulates that in the document that is entitled, corresponds to staff application, and that's, this is all in your package. And back then, she addressed the off-site parking indicating that the applicant would have to demonstrate that if they're not going to provide onsite area, they would have to indicate that, that there is no RV parking within the development. They would have to access private storage areas.
I don't know a lot of them do that.
Yeah.
So as proposed, that's my... Okay, we still have a motion and we have a second on the table. Do we have any other discussion? Seeing none, Scott, bye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. We'll go to that point. Okay, next thing on the, uh...
Excuse me, can I, so you're requiring RV parking?
Uh, ten blocks.
Can you give me some kind of direction as to what that means, because the ordinance is pretty silent on what that means?
Well, it says, uh, at least ten, staff recommended sixteen, so we went to the lower end and we have a criteria there, Travis? Yeah, I mean, just...
I would have to say get with staff and have that put in staff.
Hey, I've got one big issue here. And I, I came to the zoning and planning meeting and I, we talked about this damn fence that's going next to me. He's talking about a Simtech fence that's not in any properties throughout the whole city. There's no timeline on, on to show how that lasted. Thirty years is not long on a project like that. And to say that it's guaranteed for thirty years, that's only, that's a manufacturer's backing and it's not really a proven timeline on that fencing. It had been approved through zoning and planning to be a masonry fence along my property line. And I feel like this has been passed through and with, with it kind of in the back door that this is even going through because that was finalized at zoning and planning that that would be a masonry fence. Masonry fence is a hundred-year fence and it's a secure fence. I have livestock, I have animals in there and I really don't think that a vinyl-type fence is adequate between my property and my usage in that fence.
Well, I would probably say...
Do you guys have, yeah, well, yeah, I have that now and that's adequate to protect livestock, but I have, I'm going to have three hundred people living next door to me and a lot of little animals running around.
It's, it's tough fence, it is tough fence. If I didn't think of the stuff, I wouldn't have recommended it. I, I know what the Simtech is.
And, and I'm surprised...
Well, I'm sorry, but...
Before we get gone too far here, uh, we've closed the public hearing, so it's been done, it's been voted on.
How did your meeting start? I thought they started at seven.
Six.
We started at six o'clock. So, I'm sorry, but we've got a rest of the agenda to go through and we've already voted on this, so we're going to have to carry on from there.
Did you consider though, as far as paving the sewer, our place to develop it would only be thirty feet off of where he's developing? How does it...
What I would say, what I would say on that, probably get with Travis.
We can't landlock you and...
You are landlocking us.
We can't landlock you, right, Travis?
Yeah, the South Mountain study says the sewer would go west and then north, right there, just because of the topography, I mean...
So which is?
The only thing they can do, if they want to go hire an engineer and demonstrate that they could go east, then that's fine, but we, we paid nine thousand dollars for a state.
There's, there's no basement, it's thirty feet of...
Hi, it's getting carried away.
Well...
We're gonna...
Yeah, we have a, we have a property next door that's being totally sabotaged by this and it's all behind closed doors.
Wow.
When they change...
We, we have had our public hearing and it was public, it was open.
Well, the last one was public too and we came away with a feeling like the project was going to go through and it wasn't going to be a negative impact on us. Now it is a negative impact on us.
Well, what I would say, probably, why don't you get with Dave here and get your name on the agenda for the next council meeting? We'll bring it back up and you can be on the agenda and then bring it up. How's that sound? Okay?
Does he get to do anything while we bring it back up?
What, what does that do? You know, once you approve this stuff, I'm kind of thinking it's kind of a closed, closed lock system.
Well, as of right now, it's already, it's done, it's been voted on.
Well, the, the problem is, it's just like what he showed, that map, it's already been approved. The problem is, if you don't want a house next door to you, the option, you know, you think that you buy it.
Yeah, we've had that all along, we've bought it all along. When this, when this is approved, it says you have seventy percent civic approval on that, you didn't even have fifty percent when you approved the annexation.
You didn't.
You know?
Well, we have enough signatures to, that went through. The state, the county and state don't let us do it unless there's enough signatures for the acreage.
We were told that you would, and you would get with us all out there and let us be have a voice in it. We've not had anything, not a thing. We come to the meetings, we sit and we listen, we tell you what our problems are and then we come here to, to, I too thought it was at seven o'clock, I apologize. But we have voiced an opinion at every meeting to tell you what problems are and we're still ignored.
And I don't know that the drinking water's really been addressed adequately either because him, he and he are, are engineers and it needs to be done by a geologist. And I called the state division of water and the, over the state engineer over my drinking well and they said it's the city's responsibility to guard my drinking water. And I don't think there's been a, a geol, a geologist that's looked at that drainage on there and how that's going to impact me. And you're draining all of the street drainage into sumps that are, that I feel are too close to my drinking water. They went with a standard that, uh, it compares it to a, a septic tank. An septic tank, and what's in a septic tank is completely different than what comes off of yard surfaces and roadway surfaces. It's not going to be sitting on the surface and, and let the sun take care of it naturally, it's going to be directly and put into the groundwater and it's going right directly into my drinking water and, and my neighbor's drinking water. And I think that the ground, before you develop out there, you need to have a groundwater protection plan in place so that we don't have to worry about these things. But right now, I don't see that it's been addressed. We, he said, oh yeah, well, the standard is two hundred feet on a septic tank on an uncased well. Well, we're not even talk, we're not talking about a septic tank or a fifteen hundred gallons possibly a month, we're talking thousands and thousands of gallons per storm being directly injected into my surface water and groundwater that's going to pollute my well and pollute my drinking well and my neighbor's wells. And I, I think that these things need to be adequately addressed. I brought them up and nobody seems to really care too much about it. They want to get the project through. You know, I've got trees all down there and he's got an excavation that's going to go directly down my tree line, six feet off my tree line, some of the trees are a hundred feet high and he's excavating down twelve feet. Now that's going to completely gut my root system on my trees. Is it my liability to have those trees removed so they don't fall on his houses? You know, there's things that I don't think are being adequately looked at here. It is, it impacts me quite a bit and I don't, you know, I think that these things need to be, be addressed.
That's some change.
Okay, well, I'll tell you what we'll do is, why don't you get with Mark?
Who's Mark?
Right here, he's our attorney. And, uh, give him your, your concerns and Mark, you will go through and address all of those concerns and everything else and, and kind of go from there and then we'll just, if need be, we'll bring it back to council. I don't know what else to do right now, but it's kind of at that point.
I've got to say one thing, Mayor.
Yeah.
Again, if the group of you guys can want to get together, go into the city and see what the master plan is for that area, which was in public forum, and then start talking about that and then come back to the city and start talking about that.
Now, that's one problem too, is the master plan showed that property draining to the west and north also. So this property is being developed by sequence and it's impacting my property by doing that because it's changing the drainages, the utility systems, everything that way by letting that property develop first. That property would have been one of the last properties developed according to your master plan because the drainage system would have forced it to have gone that way, the way that the utilities were coming in.
Okay, we'll get with Mark and we'll go that route, okay? So, and then, and if you have any other concerns, uh, get with one of the councilmen or whatever or after and, and voice your opinion. We're going to carry on and go to the next one. The resolution for the decurral agreement was asked to be tabled, so do we have a motion to table that? Okay, we got a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next thing is the resolution adopting the mountain land pre-disaster hazard mitigation plan and, Travis?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, this is, um, just, I'll give you a brief, just a quick summary. It's mountain land pre-disaster hazard mitigation plan identifies mitigation goals and actions to reduce or eliminate long-term risk to people and property in Pace and Utah from the impacts of future hazards and disasters. So it's, it's stuff we've done in the past before and it's just kind of, by adopting this, it helps us also when funding is available that we apply for, for projects. It just helps us stay in line so that they don't have a reason to kick us out of that. So I, I wasn't going to show anything on it, it's a long report, but if you have any questions, I can try to answer them, but it's...
Well, look, to me, I'll give you the same thing as we've done the past couple years. I don't know about you. Motion to approve, uh, adopting the mountain land pre-disaster hazard mitigation plan, six, seven, one, seven, eight.
Second? Okay, we got a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next thing on the agenda is the ordinance, amending the distributed generation, distributed generation or net metering program.
Mayor and Council, we, uh, we met, we met with the customers that had solar before we amended the ordinance and, uh, and with, with the input from the council, we agreed to grandfather those that had already been, um, on the solar system. So I went back and amended the ordinance that put back the, the way to, to bill those customers that were prior. So we're, we're basically putting the grandfathering ordinance, uh, for those customers. So that's, that's the only change to the ordinance, amending the net metering program. So we need a motion to amend the ordinance.
Okay, we have a motion or a discussion?
Mayor, I'll make the motion that we adopt the amendment to the ordinance.
Well, seconded. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Mike?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Next thing on the agenda is resolution, amending the fee schedule regarding net metering.
Same thing, this is a fee schedule that puts that formula in to, 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 uh, charge the previous, uh, solar customer.
Do you want to make the same motion?
Yeah.
Do you want to move that? Same second? Scott?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next thing is the request for a private road on the A5 annexation holding zone and alternate, Travis?
This one should hopefully be quick, Mayor and Council, but, um, this is on the Hyatt property, so this just shows you what the existing property is, everything highlighted in red there. Um, and so what they're proposing to do is buy our ordinance, they're not proposing to rezone it or anything, they're just, our ordinance allows them that A5H zone to split. If you have a parcel, you can split it once without, you know, going through the subdivision process which will trigger all the curb debt and utilities and all that, so they would just rearrange the existing parcels, like I said, there's, you can see them all there, there's quite a few, and then they would, they would rearrange it, this requires, the reason this is before you is because it would require a private drive which is highlighted in yellow there. So it'd be a twenty-foot wide road that would have, um, three inches of gravel over some compacted road base because he would eventually like to actually pave that for himself. We don't require it, but, um, we've, we've had meetings with the applicant, Mike Hyatt, and we've met, you know, staff with Scott Spencer and everybody, so public safety is good with this and that, and it just, so you have to obviously front a private drive or a, a public street to be able to do that, so that's, that's the reason it's here before you is it just... here before you, is it just because it's a private drive, it has to be approved by the council, so I don't know if you have any questions, but...
I have one question, Travis, since this, about four different lots, this private drive, does that mean they can put four different houses on this private drive?
As long as they can meet the front end requirements, that one piece you can see is really skin and soul. You know, as long as, I, I can't remember how, what the distance is there, but yeah, as long as they can meet that, they can, yeah.
Okay. We'll make the motion to approve the private road on the A5H holding zone. Okay, we got a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second, any other discussion? Scott?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion is approved. Next thing on the agenda is the request for modifications to the off-road street parking and setback requirements in the CC1 zone. Travis?
So, um, on this, Mayor and Council, this is the Q90 office project, which, just to reference you, is right across from the fire station where the old post office was that burnt. You know, and then, so that, that's kinda where they're proposing to go, so the off-street parking requirements, because of the size of the building, would, would, would require twenty-six parking stalls. And, so what they're proposing is providing twenty-two, which thirteen are on site and nine would be on the road. When we get just a little bit farther, I'll show you the, the layout, you can see why there's no way to fit that many parking stalls on that site as small as it is, but, um, we've had, we've met with them also as staff and, you know, with police and the, and fire and all of the staff and I don't think anyone has a, has an issue with the number of parking stalls for what their business is. So, um, that's, that's kinda the version there and so, uh, the setback requirements on here, as you can see there, it's twenty feet is what the ordinance requires and they're requesting, in the one layout, they're requesting it to be, uh, with, the rear setback to be within seven feet, four inches of the property line. And, um, because of, um, some issues with the site and that, they, they went from a two-story to a three-story building, so, um, this is just kinda option one, which you can see that the parking lot would be out front, so the fire station's just to the west on the left there. And then the building would be obviously to the right, to the east. And then, this is kind of a rendering of what that would look like with the three-story
What about the residential house to the east? They done the whole place?
Um, I don't think, I don't think they have it at this point.
And the business to the north?
Well, that's far enough away then.
Is it?
Well, no. It's just be, just be the house to the east and then...
Yeah, so this, that's the first option. Option two would be to move the building, obviously to the west and put the parking on the, on the east side, so that would, obviously, I think in staff's opinion is the better option, just because then you don't have that three-story building right next to the house. And, and, you know, the post office was a two-story building that used to be there, so I, you know, I think this is here.
Count some of that parking over there in the public, behind the, uh, fire station?
Yeah.
You can't, you can't get that in there and...
Has to be private.
Private or is that city?
But no, but ha, it has to be private, you have to get an agreement from a private one, or you can't use... But, you know, this is option two, which obviously the same three-story building and then option three is showing, you know, it back in the same location by going back to a two-story, but the, the reason that the applicant doesn't wanna go with the two-story is because, um, if I go back to this side, because of how close that building is to the property line, they, to dig the basement, they would have to shore it up because of how deep it is so they don't impact the neighbor and the cost got pretty expensive to be able to do that, so that's why they decided to go up instead of staying with the basement and go, you know, go the two-story. So their top story on the street, three-story option would just be storage, so it'd kinda replace the basement option, but, um, that's another little, so I don't know if anybody don't have a problem with it. I'd recommend, uh, approval for the off-street parking and then go with option two on the setback for the CC1 zone for the Q90.
I'll second that. I do have one question, Travis, have you talked to them about option two, are they okay with that or?
I know Jill has talked to them more than I have about it and, uh, they provided actually this PowerPoint presentation, so, so they know about it and their architect, BJ Lind, is here, so...
Come on, and, and state your name and then, uh... Who you're with and all of the, you know, formal stuff.
So my name's Barton Lind, uh, with Element Architecture and, uh, the owner's okay, just, I just wanted to say that, yeah, we're okay with, with pushing it out. Um, the, the intent with the three different options is so we have a decision today on one of them so we can move forward, um, and if, if we pull it to the street, we're, we can do that, so.
Yeah, we're doing it now, two are you?
That's kinda the way.
Sorry, did I say three or two? Option two.
Option two, yeah. Yeah. Okay. We've got a motion, we got a second? Hi Brian, do we have any other discussion? Seeing none, we need a vote, Mike?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Bye.
Okay, motion carries. All right, do we have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second now.
All those in favor?
I have a, uh, I'm gonna motion favor this, so we have Doug and Brian here for this.
Okay. So we want a motion to be in closed session?
How was probably motion? How was probably motion then? Do you want a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, so then just a motion to adjourn.
You're okay with that, everybody?